We'll call this regularly scheduled meeting in Bridgewater Town Council order. I'll just note that Council McDowell is unable to join us tonight and our CIO has strep throat, so we are glad that he's not here tonight because otherwise he'd have to be in a different room, so we hope that Richard feels better. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we will deem the agenda approved. And announcements from councilors. I can't get Council Thorburn because I know you've got some.
Oh, I've got a couple, but only one tonight. And just to let everybody know that it's Fire Prevention Week and it's from the 7th to the 13th, and the motto is look, listen, learn, beware. Fire can happen anywhere and at any time. Bridgewater started off with a church parade on Sunday, October 7th. Tuesday today, there was fire drills at the schools, daycares. Wednesday night, mutual aid parade in Mahone Bay, 7 o'clock. Thursday night, anybody that's interested, there's a firefighter soccer game, 7:00 p.m. at the fire station. And Saturday, there's a safety fair from 1:00 to 3:00 at the fire station. So come out and enjoy your firefighters and they appreciate you showing up.
Thank you. Any other announcements from members of council? I have to make an official one here. I'm going to try to lean into my microphone and read this. See now, I should have brought my glasses. Just advising the public that the date for the second reading of the repeal of outdated bylaws, Chapter 7, is going to be held on November 13th during the regularly scheduled town council meeting. So we've just changed the date of that, so just to advise the public. And for announcements from me, this morning I was in Toronto speaking at the Smart Cities World Forum and Expo about our energized Bridgewater plan to a room of delegates from around the world, and that was pretty exciting to have an event like that actually call Bridgewater and ask that we be the first keynote speaker for that. So that's, it's pretty cool. And when, you know, it just goes to show you that it doesn't really matter how big or how small we are, we all have a role to play when it comes to dealing with climate change or energy costs or, especially in this community, energy poverty. So it was kind of cool to be presenting there with cities like Seattle and New York and San Francisco. So. And Bridgewater was first because I think they just knew how great energized Bridgewater was, so that was pretty cool. Hearing nothing else, we'll get right into the achievement awards because our gallery is full with people who I know you just want to sit through the whole council meeting and you're more than welcome to stay, but we'll jump right into the achievement awards. If Deputy Mayor Tanner, you'll call out the names and we'll ask people to come on up.
All right. Gabrielle Levecq, I think I saw her come in. Hi, Gab. Gabrielle competed at the 2018 Canadian National Skating Championships that took place in Vancouver in January 2018 with her partner Pierre Alexandre Houdon. She can, she can correct me. And won a bronze medal. Gabrielle and her partner Pierre Alexandre Houdon represented Canada at the International Skating Union, the ISU, Junior Grand Prix Championship that took place in Gdansk, Poland in October 2017. They also represented Canada in Linz at the Austrian Junior Grand Prix in August of 2018 and finished in eighth place. The medallion is inscribed with the 2018 Canadian National Skating Championship Champion Bronze Medal and the 2017 and 2018 Team Canada ISU Junior Grand Prix Championships. Congrats, Gabrielle. And the Bridgewater Bulldogs baseball team, the Bridgewater Bulldogs of the 2018, you guys can come down. Yeah. The Bridgewater Bulldogs of the 2018, 15 and under A Tier 2 Nova Scotia Provincial Baseball Champions. They defeated the home team, Clark Harbor Foggies, in the finals of the six-team tournament. The plaque inscription is the 2018 15 under A Tier 2 Nova Scotia Provincial Baseball Championships. And Aidan Corkum, Jean-Luc Godet, Benjamin Guthro, Ethan Corkum, Charlie Harris, Jack Laws, Nicholas McIntosh, Brett Risser, Jacob McCharles, Owen Parsons, Keegan Wade Parker, Brandon Wenzel, Jalen Zink, and head coach Chris Zink, assistant coaches Stephen Risser and John Laws. Congrats.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Tanner. And yes, congratulations to everybody. Fantastic. Our town is certainly well represented. Are there any members of the public that wish to come as a delegation for any topics in particular? Maybe I'll wait till everyone clears out.
And then there was one.
Thanks for staying, Palma.
Bring him right up to the table.
Yeah. We've got a seat up here if you want. Palma, did you want to be a delegation if you have anything to bring forward? No? Okay. Love living in a small town. All right, the minutes for September 24th and October 3rd, the regular meeting and special council meeting are there. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, we will deem the minutes approved. Skipping down to correspondence for action, we have the Bridgewater Junior High Crosswalk at 100 York Street. So this has been something that I believe most members, if not all of council, have received feedback from parents and teachers alike, so just for the education of the general public. We've had a bit of challenges with having crossing guards. The upside of having the bell times the same between both schools is that you have one dismissal time. The downside is that for us, it's very hard to hire a crossing guard or anyone to work one hour a day, five days a week. So we've struggled to find crossing guards, and so we haven't had crossing guards at all the, at all the various points. And so the motion in the package here is to refer the letter regarding traffic concerns at the Bridgewater Junior High School to the town's traffic authority and the police chief to try to come up with a solution. So if someone is prepared to make that motion, we can discuss that.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater refer the letter regarding traffic concerns at Bridgewater Junior High School to the town's traffic authority and chief of police.
Have a second here, please. Council for Shire, discussion, pretty straightforward.
It would be nice if some of those, some of the solution could be the older kids putting as volunteers.
And I don't know if, if that's something you're able to look at or work with the school, but do you know with the timeline when we would get some information back?
I would hope, I guess, speaking on behalf of Chief Feener, I'd hope that at the next council meeting, we have something back to counsel.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is Bridgewater Tennis Club, who have expressed interest in relocating to Generations Active Park. And of course, as we know, that park is an active park and one of the components proposed in future phases are components like a tennis court. It's a, it's a nice fit on that side of the river. Someone prepared to make a motion to refer that to staff? Council for Shire?
Yes, Your Worship, I'll make a motion that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater refer Document 18-146, Bridgewater Tennis Club requests to relocate to Generations Active Park to staff for a report on potential location and financial implications.
Have a second here, please. Deputy Mayor Tanner, discussion?
Who owns the tennis club?
That's a good question. Do you, is it a, is it a board or association?
It's not a profit, right?
So that section of land belongs to the tennis club or is it leased?
Can't remember how that works, honestly.
That could be part of the report back.
Yes, we can just make it. It's a good question.
Actually, I thought it was included in that report.
Perfect, thank you. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
And I guess there was a proposal two or three years ago to relocate it at the LCLC, and I guess, I'm not sure what's happened with that and why the switch to Generations Active Park.
My understanding, because I had the same question, was that there was more work to do at the LCLC site than first, they first thought. So it, I guess on the surface, it looked like they could just use that overflow parking lot in the back and they could, at the very least, get up and running. From the information I got from the CIO was that's actually not the case, that it's not ideally suited for a tennis court and it would have, it would have to have more work done, which made finding another site just as plausible as that one. So, no, it's a good question. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried and we'll look forward to that coming back. Next item is, under reports and recommendation, proposed hospitality policy. Just for education of the public, in October of last year, changes to the municipal government act were made and given royal assent by the province to deal with hospitality and each municipality had to establish the expenditures, a policy that establishes the expenditures including alcohol purchase that may be a hospitality expense, establish the approval process for authorizing hospitality expenses, establish the scope and, yeah, scope of the policy and how to comply with the regulations. Now, I would take this opportunity to note that we don't pay for, we don't reimburse alcohol, so just want to make that clear right off the bat. In the town of Bridgewater, we don't, we don't reimburse alcohol. So in the package there, there's different examples from different municipalities and what they're doing, and I guess I'll open this up for debate to see if anyone has any questions before we approve the hospitality policy.
Well, the only comment I'd make, I think probably the town of Bridgewater has the most stringent alcohol policy of any, any facility I've known, any government agency or any municipal unit is zero. I mean, there's absolutely no purchase of alcohol.
And it's been that way for some time, so I guess it's also important to note that we didn't need changes to the municipal government act to tell us to do this. We've been proactive for like a decade or more.
But we are required.
But we are required.
Hospitality policy under the changes to the MGA.
Yeah, so we'll make these changes and kind of enshrine them in this policy. No questions? Yes, please.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the hospitality policy as presented in Document 18-139 and implement as Policy 94 for the town effective immediately.
Have a second here, please. Council Thorburn, further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? As opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is just an update on the Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program. It's the September 2018 report. And always interesting to see the number of active clients, 73 active clients, 32 receiving service, 19 new referrals, 23 home visits, one closed file. This is a program that is vital. Yeah, important, vital. And so we're proud to have this in our community, but it's, it's growing, which isn't always great.
And as the senior population grows, it'll grow.
Yeah. And, and this covers everything from, they deal with senior abuse, elder abuse, people who just need legal advice, things like that, referring them to clinics, and that's all in the report. Are there any questions or comments on that? Okay, thank you. Building inspection report for August 2018 is there. If we, if anyone has any questions, I'm sure Mr. Feener is more than happy to entertain those.
We continue to show strong growth.
Yeah. Just a question.
There's a development on North Street, I believe, and then by the ANW, and then there's another one, looks like there was addition to a house on Le Havre. Those aren't, don't seem to be on these, this report, and I don't remember on the last one. How does that, refresh my memory, when the permit is issued, at time of construction?
Sorry. Once the building permit is issued, the date of the building permit, then it would go into the system. So it may, if, it may have been there before because permits would have been issued, but perhaps, I mean, we can check those specific properties if you wish.
No, I don't remember seeing it on the last one, honestly, and I thought it might appear obviously then on this one, but I don't see either, but that's mine.
He done a lot of renovations that, two or three months ago before he built the piece on, so it might have been all one, one deal.
Yeah, it could have been. Maybe that's what it was.
And this is the August report, so it could maybe it appears in September, but he was doing work there for quite a while.
June, July, August.
Just further to Council McGuinness's comment, we, yes, we continue to show very strong growth. My hope is that as we were the fastest growing town in the last census of 5,000 people or more, my hope is that we are, we are the fastest growing town, period, in the province. And I would suggest that the data we have in front of us will show that we're well on our way to achieving that. So that's, that's great. Great news for the town and credit to everybody. Next item is Smart Cities Challenge update. This is our October update, and so for, again, for the education of the public, as I'm hoping everybody knows, we are Smart City Challenge finalists. That's the federal government's Smart Cities Challenge. We are the $5 million finalists. We are the only $5 million finalists from Atlantic Canada. This is for energized Bridgewater, and so there's a long process to get us to actually submitting the final piece that I think is due, I think it's January, but it's been a bit of a moving target. And we don't know the date, it'll be spring of 2019 when the federal government has its judging. I know that in November, Mr. DeVried and Mrs. McDonald are headed to Toronto to a conference that is just for the Smart Cities Challenge participants, and they will be having to give a presentation in front of the jury, so that's exciting. So just in this update, it's talking about, you know, the public engagement is going to start soon, and Picnic Studios is preparing the media presentations, and, and there's a whole bunch of steps that our staff are doing, and we have some staff that are new from the, our prize of being a finalist was $250,000, and so with that, we did have to hire some staff in order to get this thing ramped up, and so we're well on our way. So that's your update for October. There'll be another one in November. Any questions?
Refresh my memory, is it down to five towns that we're competing against?
Yes.
We're one of the five?
We're one of the five. Yeah, there's five in each category. Any other questions? Great. The next item is council priority planning. So this has been something that's been on the agenda from the CIO, who's just kept us up to date on the council priorities that we started off in November 2017. And unfortunately, Mr. McCollum isn't here to give us his update. Some of these include the wind-up of the REN, the Museum 2.0 concept approval, new MJSB agreement, planning, it was the, the one year of the transit pilot, especially the hitting of our 25, the 25,000 passenger mark, new transit passes. Just trying to pick some of the items that are here. Anything else in that report that people want to highlight or any questions that they have?
One would be the fire completion of the underwritten review.
Yes.
So that, because the town of Bridgewater Fire Department is so successful and is so good, it means that taxpayers in the town of Bridgewater get a reduction on their home insurance, which is a, which is a good thing.
Yeah, that's an important one.
We should be talking about that.
We should. And you raise a good point, and so to our millions of viewers that are watching, we're live streaming, it would be a good idea to contact your insurance company and let them know the level of service that we, we offer. Is that a report, has that been published yet, or there's some tweaking left to do in it? If, Council Thorburn?
Yeah, there was a few things, but I'll check with Chief Nice because that should be on our town's webpage, and I think we put the last one there in 2009 on there. The residents can go in and read it and see what our rating is and how we're doing, and it's just good news for everybody.
And I can tell you, when, when the last one that we did, which was a few years ago, I did call my insurance company, just as a real-world example, and my insurance did go down when I told them what our fire rating was. I think that, is it fire rating, is that what it's called? The insurance was reduced, and I want to say it was about $100, which is not nothing, so we'll take it. So when, we'll try to get that posted on the website when it's finalized, and people should take a look at that.
Maybe write a story for the bridge.
That's a good idea. Any other questions regarding that? Fantastic. The next item is tender to purchase a 2018 or newer, so I'm assuming 2018 or 19, five-ton pickup, five-ton truck. And so before we put a motion on the floor, are there any questions? I heard some questions over here before the meeting started, maybe.
We solved all the.
You solved all the world's problems. Fantastic. Mr. Feener, any, anything you want to add about the purchase of this truck?
Other than, excuse me, all the proposals did exceed the budget. Excuse me. However, staff are recommending that we don't trade in the old truck at this time. We feel that there's more value in trying to get rid of the truck after the fact. So we are recommending purchasing from the low submission being Silver's, and I believe all the other details are included in the report.
Questions? No? Ready for the motion? Yes, please.
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award tender 18-08E, supply of a 2018 or newer five-ton truck to the low bidder, Silver's Garage, 2008 Limited, to purchase a new 2018 five-ton truck, complete with dump box, reversible quick connect, plow, automatic transmission, for a total price of $215,698.03, including HST, $195,602.48 net HST excluding the trade-in.
Have a second here, please. Council McGuinness, further discussion?
Yeah.
Yep.
Larry, what approximate value is the trade-in? I see on there it was 5,000. Is it likely we can get more?
That's correct. One supplier offered around 5, the other supplier was around 12. So we're anticipating, looking at some of the market, that it'd be closer to the 12,000.
Yeah, so we won't be so far over budget if we can get 10 or 12,000. I think our budget was 180, if I remember correctly?
170.
170, okay, that's even worse, sir.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Under business arising, unfinished business, we have the second reading for the PACE program update. That's the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, and so that, that is in your package. We had our discussion and our update from Mr. DeVried at the first reading, so there's been no changes or amendments required. Council for Shire?
I'm just going to declare a conflict of interest where I've made an application to the Net Zero Program, so I'm going to step aside for this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion, Your Worship?
Yes, please.
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the amended policy 89 fees with the addition of PACE program interest rates effective, effective October 17, 2018 to 18 to coincide with the effective date of the amended PACE bylaw. I may have read the wrong one.
Uh, yes, I think you're reading the, you're reading the interest rate one.
Yeah, my apologies.
No problem.
The Town Council of the town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the amended Chapter 199 Property Assessed Clean Energy PACE program bylaw as presented in Document 18-130. Adopt as bylaw and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to Section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Second here, please. Council Thorburn, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Now, the next item, which perhaps Council McGuinness will read again, is the addition of the PACE program interest rates into the, the fees policy. So this has been, what we've been doing lately is removing fees from bylaws and putting them into policies, because if we change fees in a bylaw, we have to go through first and second reading of the bylaw, which takes a great deal of time. And by putting them into the fees policy, we can pivot a little quicker if we need to or if the public demands it, so it's a little easier for us and it's a lot easier for the public. So, Council McGuinness?
Yes, Your Worship. I move the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater approve the amended policy 89 fees with the addition of PACE program interest rates effective October 17, 2018 to coincide with the effective date of the amended PACE bylaw.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Thorburn, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Council for Shire's coming back. Our next item is the taxi bylaw and taxi fare fees. Just a clarification on, on the wording that was there. We had some questions about it, and it's pretty straightforward. It does not change the intent or the bylaw itself, it's just a clarification. Any questions on that? No, it's pretty straightforward. Okay. Our last item is the facade improvement program, and so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brown to kind of explain some changes that are happening there, and then council can make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff have been in front of council a few times to talk about the facade program and the facade society. The society has wound up its operations and has or will transfer any remaining money back to the town. At its last meeting, the society approved four applications, each at $5,000, so for a total of $20,000, funding to be dispersed upon project completion. Also at that meeting, the society tentatively approved four other applications, conditional on there being funding in the future, so next fiscal year. As well, staff have spoken to the Downtown Plan Advisory Committee to gauge interest in administering the program, should it continue. The Downtown Plan Advisory Committee would be open to doing so, so therefore reviewing applications and, and making recommendations to council on a application-by-application basis, again, should there be funding available in the next fiscal year. So council, in the report before you, you'd be given two options to consider, at least two options to consider. One, terminate the facade improvement program, or two, continue the facade improvement program through the Downtown Plan Advisory Committee, and by doing so, deliberate the allocation of funds through the 2019, 2020 budget process. And then if, if it's option two, the staff recommend council declare the facade improvement program area as a downtown business district, and that, that simply, in accordance with the municipal government act, allows the town to grant funding. So that, that declaration of a downtown business district is necessary to do so.
Questions, Deputy Mayor Tanner?
So Nick, at one time, the, the applications that we expected to get in just weren't coming, and so we considered this expansion zone, and I believe staff recommended the expansion up Dufferin and so on. So why aren't we keeping that recommended option of maintaining Dufferin? And then just hope that more applications come in and hope that Town Council maybe has budget room to allow for more funding for this kind of thing?
Right, good question. Because, yeah, that, that came, the facade society recommended a greater expansion, so Aberdeen Road across the river, as well as Dufferin Street and Pleasant Street. And then staff came back with a more modest expansion, it's more so, could be viewed as a bit of a compromise at the time. That's not saying that, that staff believe Dufferin shouldn't be included. I think that, that it would be beneficial to those properties on, on Dufferin Street, the commercial properties on Dufferin Street, to, to have that ability to apply for, for funding. With the recent applications and the interest that, that we're seeing right now on King Street, staff have really decided to, again, sort of refocus on that King Street architectural control area, hoping that these current applications and the work that, that will be done over the next year will really spur on some more interest on King Street. So, you know, this whole program was brought on by the waterfront, Downtown Waterfront Master Plan. It was one of the recommendations in that plan, so, you know, the focus is sort of being turned, or, or, you know, we'll keep the focus on King Street, and that's kind of been our approach.
Good question. Council Thorburn?
Yeah, it seems like all of a sudden, we have eight applications, four we're going to do now and four we have to hold. So I agree with refocusing on King Street, and if it gets where we don't have many, then we can expand. But that, the original intent was to do the downtown core area first, so let's stick with that, and then as requests decrease, then we can extend it in whatever direction we see necessary at the time.
And I will say, by bringing the Downtown Plan Advisory Committee on board, the, the idea was to idea was to run that, that idea past that committee, you know, see what, see where that leads us as well.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
So if, if we find in April or June or, or they say, listen, you really should expand it, what's involved? Can we literally just do it at one council meeting versus another report by staff and another discussion set? I just, you know, make some quick decisions and get it moving again, I guess is, can you do that? Can we do that or?
Yep.
Okay.
Simply put, the, the program would, would need a little revision.
Okay.
And this, the business district would need to be expanded.
Sure.
But yes.
Okay. That's a good question.
In regards to disbursement of the grant, I'm just surprised that we can give money to a private business.
And staff were as well. So that, that, that came back, we, you know, we talked to our solicitor, town solicitor, about options going forward to, to disperse the funding and the municipal government act allows the town to disperse funding, to, to, to grant funds in a business district, in a, an active business district, so.
Interesting. Any other towns doing it that way? Just curious.
Yarmouth.
Right, yes.
Yarmouth does it that way? They don't, don't they have a facade society?
There, there seems to be, this seems to be the new way to do this sort of thing around Nova Scotia. We're seeing other municipalities, you know, go directly from the municipality, the municipal unit to, to private landowners.
Thank you. Good question. Counselor Thorburn?
Sure.
Or do, Counselor Fager, did you have a question?
I just wanted to comment that, you know, like anything, it's, takes time for the program to get going and I think we see some positive momentum and that we should continue where there is definitely interest from the business sector of King Street.
Counselor Thorburn?
Okay. I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the continuation of the facade program to the downtown plan advisory committee, with the facade improvement program area being the downtown business district identified in attachment A of Document 18-046, and that funding of the program be referred to the 2019, 2020 budget deliberations.
Thank you. Have a second here please, Counselor McGuinness. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. There is no other business added to the agenda, so hearing that there's nothing else, kind of motion to approve, or sorry, opposed to adjourn. Deputy Mayor Tanner, Counselor Thorburn, we are adjourned. We have an in-camera meeting for contract negotiations and personnel matter in the next room. Thank you.